...swear or affirm you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully execute, to the best of your ability, the office of city police officer according to the law. And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, you being a citizen of this state, have not fought or do with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight or do with deadly weapons, nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending or corrupting God? Welcome to the fellowship. Day on Saturday, they'll be closed Monday in Tootsie, reopen on Wednesday for the city. If you're interested in a pool party, better get in the wine, better call and get done.
Yeah, I'm from the city in Ohio.
Items of old business number two on the agenda is approved minutes from the April fifteenth meeting. If you had a chance to look at those, we'd entertain motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, I read through them.
Motion by Mr. Chayton.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Rowe. Any questions, discussion, or answer the black card? I see three. R&amp;L Paving. I'm gonna open them, run them off to you. You can report it, and then we will review again to make sure that we have... This was for milling. Costs is per square foot, includes cleanup and hauling away. That was the hard part about bidding on the milling, some want to bid one way and some another. But seventy-five cents per square foot for milling, and a hundred and eighty dollars laid in place per ton. That includes haul, tack, coat, or pick. Kind of confusing because the system proposed total of a hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-five cents. Well, seventy-five cents per square foot for a ton of blacktop would be a whole lot more than seventy-five cents.
So like this milling and paving, this is not you?
And that was R&amp;L Paving up here in Tootsie. They've done work for the city. The second company is BTI Contracting, Capfordsburg.
Did you say BTI?
No.
This is actually the company that we've been buying asphalt from where we pick it up at the plant over there, American Asphalt. They have a company that lives out in Lake, BTI. And they told me, they price milling differently. They price it, they mill, and then haul it back to their plant and weigh it, and then you pay them money. And so you're paid for exactly however many tons they mill, twenty-two dollars and fifty cents per ton.
You've been there before.
I assume we could take that seventy-five cents per square foot. Do you have to know how deep?
You have to know how deep you're milling.
But Class Two asphalt surface, one thirty-three twenty per ton, binder one thirty-one ninety per ton, and base one twenty-eight fifty per ton. R&amp;L did not specify which grade of asphalt. I assume they mean surface. So BTI surface, which is what we typically would use, one thirty-three twenty per ton. Mountain Enterprise. Asphalt milling twenty-six ninety per ton. Asphalt base one thirty-eight twenty-five per ton, binder one forty-five per ton. Surface one fifty-two twenty-five per ton. If we could do this, my recommendation would be that we accept the bid of BTI Contracting at the lowest bid of one thirty-three per ton and the lowest bid on milling. So it's the lowest bid all the way around. And then maybe as a backup, because one thing I told both of you this year, I'm not gonna be doing it at Thanksgiving. I wanna get it done earlier when it's good hot weather and not be in the winter time. So I'd like to accept the bid of BTI Contracting because it is, the surface on Mountain was one thirty-eight.
Oh, I think it was one fifty-two.
I'm sorry, you're right, Cody. One running, one started with surface. I actually kinda liked the idea of milling and then weighing it and paying for what you milled. Because as I saw last year, some of it, I paid a certain price for milling, and some of it got milled and only made them an inch thick when it should have been two inches. As the low bid and primary provider, and then if they could not do it, we would also accept the Mountain bid to be the backup.
I'll make the motion.
Who made the motion?
All of you.
Motion by Mr. Rowe, seconded by Mr. McLean, and any questions? All right, we'll have these on file. Item number four, open bids for concrete work. What we did on that is just, I wanted to, we generally have quite a bit of concrete work for old sidewalks being taken up and replaced. Some of it, if we have the time, we can do it in-house, and I make that decision on the fly if we have the free time. And it's a small job and we can do, we do it. And if not, if we have to bid, if we have to hire it out, I'd like to know that we're getting the best price. R&amp;L Paving submitted a bid for concrete removal at six dollars a square foot for removal, and nine dollars for replacement. Proposed total of fifteen dollars per square foot.
Like specifically sidewalks, like whatever they know it?
It does not, it just says concrete, it does not say sidewalk.
Because it doesn't really matter much to it, it's four inches or six inches?
But it does say it does not include stone base. No warranty is given. It does say deliver your work commencing within two weeks of notification, that's quick. Second one is pack construction. Concrete, including four thousand PSI concrete, thirty dollars and fifty cents per foot. He says provide materials, labor, equipment, supervision, remove and replace concrete, and new concrete in the city of Louisiana. All work warranted for one year, all work done in a timely manner. All areas addressed receipt instructed completion, liability and workers' contract insurance attached. That was Mac Pack, pack construction. It sounds like considerably cheaper, especially the removal.
You probably don't have any, you won't do any curbing, gutter?
I wouldn't think so.
And it doesn't warrant it?
So that motion we approved, the pack. Motion by Mr. Rowe, seconded by Mr. Farley. Any question? First, we have Boyd Truck Centers. Is that some of you all? Any of you all Boyd? You're the best. Who are you all?
We're with Mountain.
Matt?
I'm not sure about him. I'm not sure about him.
You're not sure about him?
Not me.
Assuming that we ran in the paper, the minimum front GVW and rear GVW and total. And I, I'm gonna tell you right up, I don't know what most of that means, I'm not a truck person. So I have other people that are doing this, that helped us spec it out and bid it. But this was Boyd Truck Centers. It is a... I wanna at least tell you what make a truck it is, fucking kind of it on here. Can you see? It's pretty to help me go through all this, but that is apparently me. I'm trying to just figure out if it's a Mac or a...
Is that what we want, a Mac?
Thank you, guys. See you later. Three dollars. Detroit Allison. What kind of truck is this, Booth? I know it ain't your bid, but what does it sound like? Western Star, Western Star forty-seven X. And it meets the specifications that we laid out in the bid. Two hundred and ninety-five thousand, it'd be a Western Star truck that meets those specs with New Way body.
So that's a version of Freightliner, just to...
Pardon?
That's a version of a Freightliner, just in, you know, from my service and stuff, just keep in mind.
All right, we're just with a different bid. The bid is, see what we've been using is, same salesperson. They're just quoting a New Way and a Hile. And here's another one from them.
Who is the guy who knows these trucks that you would get a Star?
This is a Western Star forty-seven X with a Hile Powertrack Commercial Rear Over, which is a heavier, if I'm understanding right, for Hile, that's the heaviest duty bed you get on one. What'd you ask me?
You said that, you know, you've got a truck guy who...
Well, William and Luther and Kinster is the ones that helped me spec it out. Kinster, three nineteen, three hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. Now, I'm sure that price is because of that heavy duty bed.
So there's different things, some of the specs you can add extra steel when certain parts are bid, so they'll differentiate from that.
Looks to me like it's the same truck on every bid, it's just a different bid.
Probably, yeah. I'll imagine so.
That's what it looks like.
I imagine you're gonna run to here shortly again.
All right. Unfortunately, it's a bit of stress right now. Five-twenty cab over Peterbilt. Five-sixty-seven conventional cab Peterbilt. Cab over Peterbilt, two hundred and nine thousand. Conventional cab Peterbilt, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Then you add the Magnilius body of a hundred and forty-three thousand, or a New Way body of a hundred and nineteen thousand. Chassis and either bed. Let's open the rest up and then I'll tell you.
Hard to declare simple that?
Yes, it is. It's been a hard time just to get bid.
There's a lot into it.
This is municipal equipment, which is, they're over there on sixty-four, ain't they? Think it's where we bought our escalator?
Yeah, they're in Louisville.
Oh, they're in Louisville?
Municipal headquarters in Louisville.
Okay. Is that what's over here by the dog truck? State?
Cross lane?
Yeah, cross. All right, this is municipal equipment of Kentucky, Tennessee, and Ohio, Louisville it is. Auto car truck with a New Way twenty-five yard Cobra Magnum. Specs attached, meets the guidelines that we put out, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-sixty dollars. Worldwide equipment. Well, this salesman's a senior truck. This must be for a Mac. Mac GR six-four-six, six-four BR. Chassis price is one seventy-seven, nine twenty-seven. And then you could add either one of these three bids. New Way, a hundred and twenty thousand. Leach, a hundred and twenty-six thousand. Magnilius, a hundred and forty-three thousand. We're the New Way, mate, but...
If you ask me that, I'd tell you, um... I can't think of something, you know?
Well, I can't either, I'm true. I was thinking Ohio? But this is the price that they bid. This is your bid, best equipment. What truck did you bid?
So I'm on that Worldwide, my body with the Leach, working with Worldwide. And then this truck, just for all information, I showed this truck to y'all that you're about to read. It doesn't meet the full specs, but it's a truck I had in stock that y'all had seen. So I was just putting it in to say it's an immediate.
Oh, is this the one you brought up here and showed us?
Yes, sir. So it was just an immediate availability, so...
I rode in.
It just had a little bit smaller engine than the specs were, so I just, I didn't expect it to...
So it is, I can't remember, give him the truck, it's a...
It's a five-sixty-seven, eleven liter Peterbilt. Same, be on that same chassis that Martin Peterbilt, that five-sixty-seven. You all expect a thirteen liter engine, this one has an eleven liter.
Oh, yeah, that's what Luther was worried about there.
Most people aren't keeping thirteen liter in stocks for trash trucks, just for a lot of baby reasons. But, so the Leach body that I'm bidding with Worldwide, you know, you'd think the Leach body would come from me and my company. And then this is a full truck that I've already got, just in case you...
Okay, so the Worldwide bid was getting the body from you?
Yep.
On their truck?
Yeah.
Or one of them. This, like I said, it's a Hile. Here's this one, here's this one, does it meet the specs, does it not? And we recommend this, and here's what I bring back to y'all, because we've been making them two weeks. Does that sound good? There's no way I can sit here and not waste all night?
I'm confused.
Yeah, me too. I don't understand all the specs. I'll make them fix us a spreadsheet that shows, you know, we're not going this way because it don't meet these specs or price or whatever. Surely out of all this, we can come up with what is the best for the plan B, which... And I'll tell you, it's, well, Bud can tell you. How many years has the city had to declare emergency to buy garbage trucks? Because we usually wait till we're in bad need of one, and then it's, you don't get one quick, do you?
Yeah, that's why I was...
Yeah, now this, they already have it put together on the lot, ready to sell. They brought it up here and showed it to us. We rode in, I rode in.
And that's the Peterbilt one?
It's Peterbilt. It's probably the highest price of all the bids because it's Peterbilt, right?
The chassis, it's a expensive chassis.
So, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't wanna ride in every day, but that one ride wasn't bad.
Yeah, it... I don't, you know, if you guys say you wanna whatever chassis, that's fine. Obviously, yeah, they get...
I mean, yes, obviously.
But it's like, so whatever.
I know, it's confusing.
It's convoluted, for sure.
It is, it's not easy buying one, I'll tell you.
Like you said, it's not apples to apples.
It's hard to see apples.
You'll find a lot of different...
Yes, very.
Chassis, I will say, my guess is all chassis will meet the specs. And then where you really get in the weeds is the body. I mean, you know, they're all packing trash, but there's just tons and tons and tons of different places to do it, and different thicknesses of steel and everything like that, you know, so...
Is that good with you all? If I bring you by something that's easy for you to see on one page, it makes sense next meeting, and you can decide if you agree with what that we recommend or not.
Do you need a motion to table that?
Well, uh...
Just ask.
I would just say, somebody make a motion that we have it reviewed by our little committee, bring it back here to you all, and you'll pick a, you'll pick one next month, and then we'll start working on finding it. Motion by Mr. Brown.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Chayton. All in favor? If you can probably say aye. Any opposed? All of a sudden seeing a need for various, there's been some changes in the gravel business, and I see the need that we, I think it would be worth our while, as much gravel as the water company buys, to go ahead and bid for gravel this year. Before, we kinda had piggybacked on the counting, and I believe it'd be best for us this year to do our own bid. So I would just like to ask you all authorize me to run a hat in the paper next week for bidding for gravel. Motion by Mr. Rowe. Seconded by Mr. Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't know. It's the Louisiana City Budget. This is the first reading, so you can approve the first reading and still take time to look at it before next month, before we would approve it again. Obviously, we did have a little budget workshop, most of you came to that. So it give us time to kinda set and go in weeds more at that meeting. And this would be to approve my proposed budget. The budget does include this year's cost of living increase set forth by the state was like two point nine-six or two, two point nine-seven, and I just rounded it on up to three. So this budget does include three percent cost of living increase for employees. That's the, that's the same rate that election officials get by the state, the state set out. That's what we've done the last few years. I talked to y'all kind of roughly about that during the budget workshop, and everybody seemed to think that's probably maybe a good plan to stay on. Any questions on my red, white, and blue proposed budget? All right, and I will say, if there's no questions on it, we can move on to number eight, which would be an ordinance. Twenty-twenty-five dash oh-one is an ordinance that adopts this budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. And I will say it has a total of two million, five hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars in revenues, two million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars in expenses. And it's broken down how much is spent on each department. So if nobody has questions or concerns, I'd entertain a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance for the budget. Motion by Mr. Clannahan.
I can second it.
Seconded by Corey Beech. Any, no questions? All in favor, she can probably say aye. Any opposed? Each year...
Thank you, thank you, appreciate y'all.
Yeah, we'll be in touch with you.
Okay, if you got any questions, go for it.
Item number nine is first reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-five oh-two, which meets the requirement that we set out employees' compensation rates each fiscal year. And that budget would show on the hourly workers, what happens here is sometimes the three percent raise puts them over the maximum. There's a minimum and a maximum for each position. Sometimes, as time goes on, the three percent raise puts somebody over, so we have to adjust that so that you're within those boundaries. That would be the, everybody's pay rate would be between that minimum and maximum for the hourly workers, and would be that for the annually. Any questions? I have a motion, we approve ordinance oh-two.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Chayton.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Rowe. Here, no questions? All in favor? All right. Item number ten would be, if you had a chance to look at that, we would entertain a motion, the total for the utility budget would be revenues three million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars, with appropriations of three million, ninety-three thousand, twenty-four dollars. And it would show you how that revenue's come in, water sales, sewer sales, and how it's spent back out. Each one of these budgets are balanced with a small surplus. I have a motion, we approve ordinance oh-three, which is the water service. Motion by Mr. Farley. Seconded by Ms. Brown. Any questions or concern? Well, it would be an ordinance of...
Eleven.
Well, that was eleven right there, ordinance twenty-twenty-five oh-three, the budget. That would be the, yeah. Twelve would be the employees for the water and service, that'll look just like the cities. Again, some of them went over because of the three percent cost of living raise, which is starting July. Have a motion, we approve the salaries for utility employees.
That's oh-four, right?
Yes, twenty-twenty-five oh-four.
Okay, I can make that motion.
All right, motion by Mr. Chayton. Seconded by Mr. Rowe. All in favor? Any opposed? July is on the Friday night, so...
I said we'd make it Saturday.
Paul, we're gonna do theirs there. We do ours Friday, so... I'm assuming everybody would be good with the parade Friday day, normal time, and fireworks Friday night, normal time. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
What's normal time?
Dusk on fireworks, and what time the parade?
I don't do it anymore, so I don't know.
Well, what was it when you did do it? The week changed in thirty years, so...
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock?
Yeah, sometimes we had it to eleven, so it was just according to what was going on in the park.
Oh, they do the music in the park?
They are gonna do the music in the park, I spoke to her, they're gonna do it on a Friday.
But I don't know what time they're gonna do the music.
We did last year, we coordinated it to where you leave the parade and go to the park?
I believe it's noon.
Could be. But you don't want, you don't want music all day because...
I believe the music's noon.
Music's at noon.
I believe so, it's noon.
Who's over the pool, sorry, who is over the parade?
I have no idea. I didn't do it last year. I can't do it at noon. There's just no way I can, I can do it, but I can do it in the evening. I, I don't know, I have no idea who, cause I wasn't here.
I think we just.
I think everybody just, whoever showed up just got in line.
Fireworks would be at dark and parade would be at eleven o'clock.
Go to the parade, go to music, go home, take a nap and come back, one of the fireworks.
My company, we've done business with them so long, they got them early, so they already had them, so we got them. So when they got them, they're paid for them and the same price and we're done.
And invoice?
Yeah, we'll get ready to get you an invoice, so we can get high, tourism helps us with high, or three thousand.
I think it's three thousand.
Yeah.
Maybe thirty-five thousand.
Harold, that's the day they wanted to bury the time capsule, too.
Fourth of July, okay. Uh, I'm sorry myself, I haven't even given my money myself. If you wanna do it, let's support them, get this done so we can get it wrapped up.
Yeah.
Uh, probably be just, we'll make come by the libraries. But let's, let's get it, let's support them and get it done, and if it is just twenty-five of us, it'd be twenty-five of us. It'll be what it'll be, let's, let's get it done, so.
Where's it gonna be, where are you gonna bury it?
They're gonna bury it July the fourth.
Where do you think we should bury it? Either that park or that park.
I'd say that one.
More room? Because that one's always gotta be a park.
Yes, tracking reports in there, if you have any questions, let me know. Uh, pool admission and season pass pricing, I always get that done, but we're normally doing it the first of May before the pools open. Since we had to cancel and put selling pool parties and passes and we just use the same prices last year. So it would probably be hard to change now, cause some people would have played the one price and some another. However, on admission, if y'all wanted to entertain that, you still could, cause we haven't done it yet. It's three dollars, it's been that, I don't know how many years, but I know I've been here ten and it's been three dollars ever since I've been here. Uh,
I thought we just changed it last year?
No, we didn't raise.
How's that?
Great.
Yeah.
Changed the party prices.
We changed the party prices or something, but, yeah. I will say, for whatever reason, I guess we're just getting an older workforce, there's not that many. Uh, there's a few.
A few, yeah.
But there, it would be only a handful. Uh, so if y'all wanna do that again, I would wanna approve one of that. And, and I have had employees ask me about a discount for party. We've never done it in the past, uh, we never give parties away, nothing like that.
So how much is a party around now?
Seventy-five dollars an hour.
During the week, Monday through Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, it's a hundred dollars an hour. Sundays, we hand over to the public, so we do rentals all day from noon to ten, so that helps with the profit margin to help us keep it up.
Yeah, I'm good with giving the passes and keeping the prices the same.
Okay. The trouble is if you try to raise it fifty cents, you got three quarters all the time.
Yes.
And, you know, I, I, I really feel like, uh, as of right now, it looks like I'm gonna get several of the lifeguards on a program through workforce, which means they will help us pay their salary. So that will keep our, uh, finances much better this year, I think. Uh, that's the way it looks right now. Uh, y'all good with that then, just leave it as it is? Passes, that includes all your firefighter kits.
Please what now?
Firefighter kits.
Okay.
Yeah, what we've done in the past. Again, there's not that many anymore, but there is a few. Uh, and then what was your thoughts on discounts for employees' parties? Yes or no?
Never done before, never done before.
All right. Moving on along, uh, any other questions about the pool? Uh, Shauna, new pool manager. We have thirteen lifeguards, all passed and cert certification, all ready to go. Any comments from the county? Motion to return to regular session.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Chaykin. Second by Mr. Farley, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, while
While we were in executive session, we discussed three pending real estate matters, but no final action has been taken.
On a potential litigation matter, no, no, uh, no final action, just potential. All, anything else? Uh, next month, when we're gonna do our proclamation for?
Uh, on the July.
July, okay.
But I want to, I'll just make sure and get it done next, next month to give to them on July, uh, eighth, next July.
All right. Leave me calling, go and go to ballgame.